Good evening. Welcome to the Barnstable School Committee meeting for February 1st, 2023. I'll start off with our district vision and core values. District vision and core values: The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community commitment. We are dedicated to continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping students' needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Moving on to 1.2, a statement by the Chair. Video and audio recordings of this meeting are, I remind, wait a minute, video and audio recording of meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Channel 18. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio and video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the Chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open-meeting law. See nobody? Well, now move on to highlights in education. 2.1. So we have two schools here tonight. We have the Barnstable Community Innovation School, and we have the Barnstable Intermediate School. So I think we're going to start with the Barnstable Intermediate School because we have some kids here, so we'll let them go first, and then we'll have the Barnstable Community Innovation School second. So come on down.
Thank you. Good evening. It's nice to see everybody again. I was here probably a year ago, this time last year, to talk about project-based learning, and I'm really excited to be here again. I want to thank our principal, Mr. Canetta, for taking some time to be here to support us tonight. He has been a very important addition to our school. We're thankful to have him. So you heard me last year. This year, you're going to hear for some kids. We have a couple handouts for you, and if I remember anything from my last time in front of you, I remembered it was really important to leverage any opportunity I had to talk about this important work that we do. So tonight, what you have first in front of you is a handout that says "Project-Based Learning at BIS." And on the front of that is a list of some of the projects students have done just since September. And the wonderful thing about all of these projects is they are 100% student-designed and student-created. In addition to that, on the back, we're doing a lot of professional learning at BIS related to project-based learning, and on the back, what you see are teacher voices. Teachers talking about the importance of project-based learning in academics. It's fun. Kids have choice. It gets a little messy, but there's really important academic impacts to this work as well. I wanted you to hear those teacher voices. So tonight, you're going to hear some student voices also, and some are going to talk about their project. Some are going to talk about why they really enjoy this type of approach. So we will start with Brandon. Come on up, Brandon.
Welcome, Brandon.
Okay, so you're going to talk right into this mic. And the other handout you have is related to Brandon's project. Now, Brandon is one of six students who worked on this particular project, and again, leveraging opportunity, he and his peers want something, and he did some research for it. So would you like to tell them what your research was about?
Our research was about a comfort dog for our school.
And what were some of the things you found out through the research?
That comfort dogs can help kids if they have any anger, if they're sad, this, anything like that.
And then one last question, Brandon. You also were able to get something to happen at our school. We had that visit.
Yeah, the, I believe, the other school, the high school, came with their comfort dog that they have at their school, and we got to meet it at our school.
So thank you, Brandon. That's part of the research they did. And if you have any powers that be to help BIS get a comfort dog, we have a group of students. There's some survey data that another student did about how much our school is ready and willing to support this. So you know how to, you knew who to reach. You knew who to reach, Brandon, if you have some ways to help make that happen. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you.
And one of the guiding questions for our first project this year was, what do you care about, and what are you going to do about it? And they had some choices, and this young lady's project, she'll tell you a little bit about, actually impacts two areas, not just one. So can you describe a little bit about your project? This is Abigail Din.
We built stuff out of eco-bricks, where we take stuff that's non-recyclable, and we made, like, bricks out of them, which helped the planet. And then what we built, we donated to daycares for the kids there.
And what did you build, young lady?
We, I built a couch.
A couch? Oh, cool. Wow.
I started with tables, stools, and Abigail worked at home, brought in completed eco-bricks, and has a built couch that we'll be donating to some local preschools. One last question. Can you just talk a little bit about, you said what eco-bricks were and what you made out of them, and you talked about non-recycling. Can you just explain a little bit more about how we make them?
We'll, we'll take, like, empty water bottles, and then, like, non-recyclable trash that we found. We went to the high school. We got a ton of trash, and then we stuffed it in the water bottles, so it'd be, like, hard, so you could, like, sit on it or, and stuff. And to, yeah, that's how, that's what the eco-bricks were.
Thank you, Ms. Abigail. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
And this is one of our seventh graders. Lauren's going to talk a little bit about why this type of learning is helpful to her, and maybe what you like about it.
I really like PBL because it gives you a more creative way of learning, where, like, the student picks a topic, like, a project, something that they're interested in learning more about, and they want to make a difference about, and then, like, the teacher gives them support throughout. They, like, push them forward.
Thank you. Good job.
Excellent job. Excellent.
And our last student voice before we close it out just arrived. Come on up. It's Camille. Surprise, you get to talk into Mike. This is the main reason we're here. We also had a cadre of students who were really interested in sports, and that is wonderful. But if you remember, the purpose for our PBL project is, how are you going to make a difference? So this young lady I'll introduce will tell you about what her and one of her classmates did. This is Camille.
Me and my classmates, we did a little project to help younger kids, 10, age 10 and below. We helped them teach the sport, basketball. And this helped younger kids learn perseverance and teamwork. And on the last day, we had a mini-basketball game. That way, we could see what their skills were, and how we could help them practice more.
And then, before you sit down, can you tell them how, they also used it as a fundraiser? So can you tell them how much money you raised and what you're doing with that money?
We raised over $100, and we're donating it to the MSPCA.
Excellent. Good job. Excellent.
So just to close out, and thank you for this time, I'm hoping leaving you today feeling great about the work that's happening at BIS, seeing some teacher voices really value the impact of PBL connected to academics, and that it's not just about choice and fun. It's about impact. It's about engagement and independence. And I have to introduce this young lady who just arrived because she also spearheaded our comfort dog project. So Brenna, you did the survey. Maybe just briefly explain the survey. This is Brenna.
Hi, I'm Brenna. I did the comfort dog survey, and we had, like, 138 students. And so we had, like, briefly a ton of questions. Well, not a ton, but like, a minimum of, like, eight. And we would answer, like, questions like what type of dog you would want, what type of, like, person you would want to be the caretaker, if that makes sense, and how much you would want the dog, and are you allergic? Minimum, we had six people on the survey that answered, yes, we are allergic. So I'm hoping that we can get more of, like, a hyperallergenic dog, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, Brenna. Thank you. Good job.
Excellent. Thank you.
So again, thank you for your time. Come see us. Come visit us. Come help us. We look forward to continuing this work, this opportunity at BIS and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Excellent job. Yeah, do we have any questions? Any questions, Kathy?
I have a question for Brandon. Where's Brandon? When you were doing your research, how much is a, how much does a comfort dog cost to purchase? How much do you need to raise to initially get the comfort dog? And then, do you have an estimate of how much it would cost to train it, or if it comes trained? I don't know about dogs.
We actually did not get to that.
You didn't get to that part? Well, maybe that's the next part. Maybe that's the next part of the project. How about that? Maybe that's the next thing we do.
If you happen to find out, then you can let me know. I'll write your first check for information, okay?
Anybody else?
I'd just like to know how comfortable that couch is. Have you sat on it?
I sat on it a few times. It wasn't very comfortable.
Yeah, any good? No. You couldn't take a nap? No, okay.
You probably need some cushions.
Could you put cushions on it and then sit on the cushions? You could do that? All right.
If you can find something non-recyclable that we can turn into a cushion.
There you go. Andre?
Yeah, just for me, you know, I'm hearing our students have diverse interests, and they're passionate about these things. Talking, student mentioned sports, basketball, something I am passionate about as well, and connecting with other students through athletics. And I'm just encouraged, this idea of a comfort dog. I know this is something that we've been looking at the high school, and we have, we have people, you know, I'm a dog owner. It's a big part of my life. You know, we have resources in town, MSPCA, so on and forth. But the student had noted that this type of learning, project-based, where the students can lead and be, and their passions and things that they're, things that they care about can take center stage, and that can kind of grow and build and develop into other aspects. Very encouraging, and we look forward to hear more about the sports, the comfort dog, and the furniture that the students are putting together.
That's kind of quite the plate there. Anybody else? No? Well, thank you very much for coming. It's always hard to get up and do, talk in front of people, and you all did an excellent job. So phenomenal job, but thank you for coming. You can all leave if you want. You don't have to stay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all the family that came and brought them, brought them here. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to our next highlight in education, which is the Barnstable Community Innovation School. Come on down. I feel like I'm Bob Barker when I say that.
You sound like it. Good evening, school committee members. My name is Alyssa Chase, and I am the Project-Based Learning Specialist at the Barnstable Community Innovation School. Unfortunately, we do not have students here with us tonight. We did reach out to families, but they have a lot of obligations. Some students are sick, sports, other things like that. But we do have a video that we would like to show you of some of our third-grade ambassadors speaking to our enrichment cluster program that started back up last Friday. So we'll have that video play for you.
Good evening, school committee members. We are the third grade ambassadors at BCIS.
I'm Frankie.
I'm Marsha.
I'm Bellary.
I'm Laika.
I'm Brenda.
I'm Hannah.
We were sad that we can't be. They have to talk to you in person. We're excited to tell you about our enrichment cluster program.
For six weeks, kids be, get to be in a cluster of their choosing.
There was 22 clusters to choose from.
Some of the clusters were flag football, ice skating, and strength training.
There's also police academy, fire safety, and co-ictu.
There's also creative drama and the Lego creations.
There's garden art and pickleball.
Kind kids, and so much more.
Clusters are taught by our teachers, parents, and some incredible members of our community.
We want to thank those community members, including members of the Barnstable Police Department, Hyannis Flower Department, Harvitz Jr., Theater, Cottowitz Center for the Arts, E-Free Wellness, Cape Guard Flag Football, Coast Guard members from Joint Base Cape Guard, and three PCIS parents.
We also want to share a huge thank you to Mark Boardley at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center for allowing us to use their facilities. After our six weeks of enrichment clusters, BCIS will have an enrichment cluster celebration at the HYCC to showcase our learning. The celebration is open to BCIS families and community members. We hope to
There's, some of the clusters were...
There's also police academy.
There's also creative drama.
All right, so I would just like to invite any school committee members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, to come over to BCIS on Fridays, this Friday, at 9:30 till 10:15, and for the next five Fridays that we are in school, to come see clusters happening in person. It's something really special, and we haven't been able to do it for the last three years because of COVID, so it's really nice to have it back. And the cluster celebration is March 17th at 9:30 at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. So we hope to see you there.
Okay, thank you. So just 9:30 to 10:15 for the next five Fridays?
Yes.
Right? Okay. 9:30 to 10:15?
Yes.
Yeah. See, that's why I repeated it, just for that. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, and thank you to the kids for making the video.
Yes.
Okay, we are moving on to 2.2, introduction of new Deputy Finance Director, or Director of School Finance. Want me to turn it over to you?
Sure. Thank you. So the second highlight we have, as we've done in the past, to introduce new administrators to the district, we welcome Christopher Dwelly with us this evening. He is the new Deputy Director of School Finance, joining us on January 17th, after having served the Town of Dover as the Town Administrator, and previously the Town of Yarmouth as the Assistant Town Administrator. So welcome to Chris.
Come on down. Oh, you get to say something. Everybody gets to say something here. Gareth was like, oh, yeah, Mike's not going to allow you to just sit back here and be quiet. Every administrator has to come down, and welcome.
Thank you very much. I really look forward to working with the committee. Thank you, Sarah, for the introduction. Sarah mentioned I recently served as the Town Administrator in Dover. Before that, I was Assistant Town Administrator in Yarmouth. I've been in public service for almost 20 years now, which is hard to believe. One of the things I've always appreciated is the complexity of public budgeting and finance, and I really appreciate the challenge of trying to stretch our limited resources to the fullest extent possible. So this is a homecoming of sorts to me.
Welcome back to the Cape.
Being able to return back to the Cape, no longer commuting about an hour and a half off Cape. So Barnstable's a wonderful community. The Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, the whole staff side have been fantastic so far, as I've been being brought up to speed, and I really look forward to working with, with the committee. And Kathy, good to see you again. Kathy, very difficult during the interview process, but in a very, in a very good way.
That's why.
In a very good way.
I'm shocked.
They said to me, they were like, we need somebody from the school committee. I was like, Kathy. I think we, I didn't get to reach out to you three because I figured we'd all say Kathy.
That's the quote of the night, right there. I said, very difficult.
I appreciate that.
Well, welcome. Welcome to Barnstable. Yeah, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Likewise.
You just echo that sentiment. Welcome.
Some foreshadowing.
Mike, just wanted, the slides, is that that I put together?
We'll just do that at the, at our school committee.
Wonderful. Yes, that works.
Does that work for you?
That works for me.
Yeah, okay. So we're going to move on to routine business. 3.1, approved school committee meeting minutes for January 11, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Move to, move to approve the school committee meeting minutes of January 11, 2023.
I'll second.
I'm a motion and second, and voiced for all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, abstain? Ayes have unanimously. Moving on to 3.2, student envoy report. Welcome.
Hello.
I don't know who you are. You don't have your nameplate on. I'm confused.
That's what we said.
I'm just kidding.
It's my favorite part of the job.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Take it away.
Of course. You know, next Thursday, BHS will be hosting a showcase from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the high school to celebrate all that we have to offer, such as pathways, AP courses, and extracurriculars. This event will be a great opportunity for current and future BHS students and families in selecting courses next year. January's Student of the Month ceremony took place today, highlighting achievements in students from grades 8 to 12. Over this upcoming February vacation, BHS students will once again have the amazing opportunity to take part in the Marine Biological Laboratory's High School Discovery Program in Woods Hole. 16 students were selected for the three-day course, and that's going to be this year focused on marine invertebrate anatomy. The Business Pathway will be introducing the Kettle, a vending machine spirit box that will help sell miscellaneous supplies to help BHS students get through their day. And finally, the BHS Drama Club will be performing their spring musical, Mary Poppins, next month, but tickets can already be purchased online.
We would love to share that the seniors took a lovely trip to the HYCC. There was lots of food. We had breakfast. We had lunch. It was so nice, guys.
The perfect indoor field day.
It was, like, there was so much food.
And, you know, it was a great opportunity for the BHS senior class to bond. We've been kind of lacking in spirit activities since COVID and all of that, but it was a great coming-together moment as we celebrated our halfway mark through senior year.
Right. We had games and karaoke, too. This week, seniors also voted for their senior superlatives via email, and winners will be announced tomorrow. We also voted as a senior class for our prom theme, and it's Hollywood. So that'll be fun. Nice Ray-Bans. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
So I got a question. Who organized the senior class thing, party?
Me.
Really?
Mister, I think it was, like, Mr. Jansen.
Class officers and Mr. Jansen. We also worked with Mark Boardley at the HYCC, who was very helpful in the process.
Yeah, so I thought, yeah, so a good shout out to Mr. Jansen for the amount of time that he put in to get that all going, and I think it's wonderful that there are people out there doing what they can to make senior year a little more bearable.
Right.
So that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, I think that, I think it was also cool that that was your halfway through.
Yes.
Like, the fact that you did it on that day is just kind of cool. Like, I was talking with some of the kids, and I didn't realize that, and they were like, yeah, they put it on our halfway-through senior-year mark. And that's just kind of neat because you're halfway done.
Yeah, it was, like, right after quarter two ended. It was nice.
Yeah, it was, like, perfect timing. Like, you kind of need that uplift, and I've heard it was a great time. So awesome job to everybody who was involved in organizing it. Good job. Excellent work. But thank you. And have a good night.
You, too.
We're now going to move on to public comment. 3.3, public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The Chair will also allow public comment at his discretion during the meeting. With that, let me just go ahead. I'm going to open public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? Yep, come on down. Let me just, one sec. Just give me one sec, just to get my phone so I can, if you could just give us your name?
Yeah, hi, I'm Mandy Morrell.
Okay, nice, nice. Welcome. Welcome. Nice to meet you. So whenever you're ready.
Yeah, so thank you so much for having me. Lovely to see some of you again, and it's my first time at a school board meeting, so this is lovely, and I feel really privileged. At my last school district that I was in, in Anchorage, Alaska, the school board meetings were much larger, so this is much less intimidating. So I appreciate that. I wanted to bring something tonight that I feel like deserves the proper attention of amazing people like yourself, and that is, I teach at Barnstable High School. I'm an English teacher. This year, I teach 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, and I wanted to talk to you about the number of classes that our students take. So they're currently required to take seven classes. It is non-negotiable. And one of the things that I wanted to bring to you about that is best practice when it comes to our students. So I've only been at Barnstable, this is my second year. I've taught all over the world. I've taught in different places in the United States, and one of the things that I'm seeing in just my short time at Barnstable is the emotional load, as well as academic load that it puts on our students. So to start with our younger grades, our eighth graders come in and are required to take seven classes in this new environment, and it is incredibly stressful for them to watch them undergo taking on this new building and being around, you know, 18-year-olds, and we don't have a separate wing for our eighth graders, so they're really inundated with this new experience. And then on top of that, they're really inundated with the amount of work that is put on them in seven classes. There, I have an advisory this year, which is awesome. It's actually a senior advisory. I feel super blessed. And I worked with eighth graders last year. So one of the things is I really am seeing the extremes, and the eighth graders are quite stressed. They're not really building those relationships that they should build within advisory because of the amount of people they're interacting with. It's, it's seven teachers. It's seven subjects, and oftentimes, there's paraprofessionals in there, not to mention wanting to be part of sports or a play. And so there's that end of the extreme. The other end of the extreme is my seniors. So I've had more seniors than I want to say leave the school this year because of the seven-class requirement.
You've got about 30 seconds, just to let you know.
Okay, so I want to say that next year, the amount of juniors that I have that are not going to be full-time seniors and are going to choose to be dual enrollment is because of this seven-class requirement. It is my understanding, and I don't know if this is true, but the school board was part of the change from six to seven, and that was because of students needing more AP classes, students who were failing needing more opportunities to make those classes up. And so the last thing I want to say is that we should not be serving the students that are needing to make up classes and putting them first, but looking at our whole entire student body, and not penalizing those who, if they take seven classes for four years, are getting 28 credits. And we are being told that we're upping the number of graduation credits instead of reducing the load for our current students.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving me a time.
Yeah, that's okay. I let you go for, like, an extra 30 seconds because I interrupted you. I always hate doing that because I interrupted your train of thought, so then it's like, I usually give a little extra time just to kind of, like, get the train I usually give a little extra time just to kind of like get the train of thought back. Yeah, you're welcome. Is there anybody else for public comment? No, nope. This is the only public comment. If you could just give us your name. Come on, come on down.
I'm Roberta Mock. I live at 80 Greenwood Ave. I'm right behind.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wondered about the MBL. I used to volunteer at MBL for the library and that program. I want to learn more about this. Why I was raising my hand. I wanted to hear more about that. I think it's wonderful that now our community college collaborates with Woods Hole. I'm very concerned about a, how do I call, I want to say this right because I started in a meeting. The, it's in Critical Endangered Migratory Wildlife Corrida, which is right behind my home. It is Joshua's Creek, Twins Brook, and the space between that, which is Twins Brooks. This, I was watching on Channel 18 at a meeting. I don't remember what it was at, but it was some, a scientist who commented on how critical these, that corridor for endangered migratorial wildlife is.
Can I just interrupt you for one sec?
I'm not, I'm in the wrong place.
No, yeah. Are you looking for the town council meeting? Probably. This is a school committee.
Yes, but I love that the schoolchildren are getting involved.
Oh, no, I agree 100%.
And so that's why I showed up.
No, but, no, but I want to put you in the right direction is what I want you to do. So what are you looking for? Do you know the committee, the board you're looking for? Was the meeting tonight?
I wanted to participate tonight by listening to school board.
Yep.
I also will be participating in the 3 o'clock tomorrow and the 7 o'clock tomorrow.
At the town council?
And the Cape Cod Council.
Okay. But you, you want to talk to us about, at the school committee?
Isn't there something about the Hyannis District, Oceanside, too, tonight? That's why I was hoping the public comment was after.
No, I think, I, one sec, somebody's talking to me. Yeah, that's in the conference room, right? Yeah, so what it is, is if you go through, right through that door over there and go straight to the, you'll see another door on the other end. What it is, is that's the conference room. That's the committee. They said they start at 6:30.
Okay.
So this is, you're more than welcome to talk to us about the school. How do you think we're doing in the, no, no. So my question to you is, do you have any grandchildren or, you're a taxpayer? No, no. So wait a minute. I'm not, wait a minute. So come on back. So how do you think we're doing with the schools? That's what we're here for.
I'm so proud.
She's got another half hour. It doesn't start till 6:30, Mike.
Of what everyone does and cares about our town so much, and I'm grateful that I live here. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, thank you. Have a good night.
I think, and she might be on the edge of like what our, you know, PBL kids can use what she's talking about.
Yeah, exactly.
And have some of those young people do a project based on that wildlife aspect.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? Seeing nobody. Okay. I will close public comment. We will move on to school committee comments and subcommittee liaison reports. So we'll move, so anybody got anything? Kathy, you want to go first?
I always have something. So policy subcommittee. We met the second, we meet the second Friday of every month. So the last meeting, we worked on the attendance policy revision, which is on our agenda later tonight. We also started Section J of the policy manual. Our next meeting is next Friday, February 10, 1 o'clock via Zoom. The other item, I missed the collaborative board again, but I'll be back on, on that this month. One other item I just wanted to bring to the attention is earlier this week, I did go down to the Cape Cod RISE event that was held on Main Street. RISE is an acronym that stands for Racial Identity Support and Exploration. The purpose of the meeting that is going to be monthly is to provide a venue designed for students of color and their families to discuss race and racism on both an individual and systemic level. It was this, I guess it was a good turnout, given I had only found about, found out about it earlier that day. And it was a small group, maybe 15 people were there, a mixture, young, older people. And they had refreshments. They talked, introduced themselves. It was very informal for the first night. They just wanted to get to know you. But I thought that the goal of the events moving forward is to help families find solidarity and so that these people of different backgrounds can heal outside of our white-dominated spaces. And that was the message that I brought back from it. Very nice group of people, not just from Barnstable. They were, some were from Wareham, some were from the other end of the Cape. So it was really nice event, low-key, met some nice people. Teacher from Serge's was sharing with my, the table I was at, a very interesting course that she developed for them. So I encouraged her to perhaps share that with other schools on the Cape because it sounded quite interesting. And that's it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Joe or, or Andre?
So we met with the climate and culture committee, and we did our usual little roundtable discussion. We just kind of put our feelings out there in the community, into the other schools, kind of, it's called, we call it roses and thorns. And we, we hear from members of kind of what's going on out there. And we talked about what we'll be doing in the future. And we've been kind of dancing around with adjusting our vision statement to include teachers and supporting our staff and creating a healthy environment for our teachers and what we can do. We also discussed how long and daunting a task that could be. I know that the pre, the current vision statement was written with the help of, I don't know how many people, but it took a very, very long time to do it. So for the time being, my suggestion, made a suggestion and got the feedback from the, from the committee. I said, how about for, as a bridge, we just do a slight adjustment to our current vision. And that will kind of serve as a guiding point before we go and kind of rewrite the whole thing and start from scratch with the new superintendent based on vision of a graduate and all, all these different things that are gonna be happening under her watch. And so if you look at our current statement, it says, Barnstable Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. So the proposal, which I just sent to your email, I was gonna explain what we talked about.
Yeah, just don't tell us what it is because then I can't put it on another agenda.
Oh, you can't? Okay.
No, because then violate, because we didn't put it on this agenda, it re-violated the meeting.
The gist of it was to adjust just one sentence to basically include creating an environment for teachers, basically.
Thank you.
So we've been trying to do this.
I just don't want it, you did not be able to put it.
So adjust one sentence in the whole thing. And they, they said, oh yeah, that, that sounds pretty good. And it makes sense because going, if you've ever done anything on a committee, the more people involved, the longer it takes and often, you know, the less likely it'll get done. You know, that's why you send things to a committee sometimes so it'll die there. But this is something I certainly don't want to die. So we got behind, the, the discussion was very positive about adding something in to support teachers. And the, the purpose of doing something like that is when that language is in there as a vision of our district, when our principals go to set their goals, they have to take into account, oh, what are we doing to create a safe environment for our teachers also and a safe and supportive environment? So we're giving, basically, their focus is, how am I also supporting teachers in this endeavor? Because supporting teachers is supporting students. So that was kind of where we came to. And Andre, you can fill in on that also.
Yeah, just to add on to what Joe said in terms of the meeting, working on the, the vision statement. And then also, what's been productive in the last few meetings is kind of looking at the different, you know, many teachers join the culture and climate, you know, because the emphasis on teachers, you know, individuals that have been there prior, making sure that our teachers feel heard, feel valued, their feedback is incorporated, which I think we're doing. So that was one component. And then also, myself being new on the committee, that's obviously a chief priority, along with looking at how the supports that we have are affecting our students and our families as well. But I think, in our previous meetings, you know, that there are different components that we need to look at distinctly. You know, what is the experience of our teachers at times, you know, feeling stretched in, overwhelmed? And how do we validate, recognize, and address those things in the moment, in real time? And then our other, you know, constituencies, students, families, you know, sometimes those concerns are distinctively different, you know, and we need to, you know, sometimes you try to get everything done, but just jumbling, jumbling all things together, it's not, it's not feasible, you know. So I think that was a productive outcome. And again, looking, you know, the idea of, and Sarah's familiar with this, the portrait of a graduate, which is something that many districts have incorporated, you know, but also a portrait of an educator, you know, and things that we highlight, things that we recognize, things that we want to accelerate, you know, amongst our talented staff members.
Yeah, and as, as a teacher myself, who has taught in seven different institutions, there are some where I felt very supported, and that was empowering. And I knew it made me much more effective as a teacher and much more, it made the job much more enjoyable. And then there are others where I just didn't feel much support at all. I didn't feel validated, and I just was dragging myself in. And that definitely, I mean, the kids can sense that. So, you know, you're, the teacher, they're leading the class, and it's their state of, their mind, their well-being is at stake. It's one of those things. And you know, you're a firefighter, right? Who do you take care of first? The guys on your crew, right? What happens if you're with somebody and they have a heart, if you're working some guy who's having a heart attack, and the guy on your crew has a heart attack, what do you do? You help the guy that's on your team that has a heart attack? Because if, because if you guys aren't healthy, you can't help other people. And that's how you do it, right? That's, that's what you do. So we need our staff to be healthy, supported, so that they can be the best teacher, the best leader in that classroom. And that's kind of the gist of it that's sometimes overlooked, right? So it's, it's, the way things go, you want your caregivers, you got to give them some care sometime, too, and make sure that they're in the, in the right frame of mind. Because as you know, you've been in the business for quite a long time. What it's like walking into a classroom in 2023 is not like it was in 2003. Totally different ballgame. And the teachers are feeling it. Thanks.
Okay. Peter, you have anything?
Just to continue with your thought, I, talking about a support and safe environment for staff. I know we, all the school committee members have heard from staff, and I'm actually looking forward to tomorrow's workshop to discuss safe environment and some of the behaviors that have been going on in the schools. And, you know, the staff is looking for changes that will lead to a safe learning environment for our students and a safe working environment for all our staff. And I believe there's nothing we, the school committee, do that is more important than providing a safe environment for all. So I hope tomorrow's the beginning of making some real beneficial changes, and I'm looking forward to the workshop tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't have anything tonight. Do you want to do your video now?
Yes, Mike, I just had a few slides.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, if you want to tee them up. Do you want to talk about them, or do you want to just show them, or?
Jen has them, you know, talking about this, you know, corresponds in terms of the culture and climate in our buildings for our, you know, for our staff members and students alike. So thanks, Jen. Just, so this is the, the BHS Military Support Club and members assisted in a community service project for Feel the Warth, Feel the Warmth, excuse me, Incorporated. Feel the Warmth provides blankets to the homeless as those, as well as those living in subsufficient housing to stay warm. It was noted that we had some inclement weather this morning that made it challenging for us to get into school, and we certainly did that. But we're certainly all looking forward to the end of this week when we know temperatures are going to drop considerably. And we're making the necessary preparations for that. And so again, this slide, we have BHS Military Support Club that's getting involved and putting together double fleece long blankets, and they pack them in waterproof backpacks to distribute to those in need. Next slide is our girls hockey team. Pink in the rink was a day that recognized cancer awareness. You know, everybody out, different jerseys, you know, recognizing, supporting, you know, providing funding for such. So our, our girls hockey team with cancer awareness, pink in the rink. This is our winter track and field program. This reported by the Cape Cod Times. We had our distance melody team, distance melody relay team. Left to right, that's Lily DeCheco, Chloe Dibb, Coach Dave, excuse me for the pronunciation, Fazuski, Fazuski did my best, Coach Callie DeCheco, and Lily Loucher. I'm sorry to all parties concerned. But the point is, they set the four-by-800-meter record, set the 400, four-by-800-meter record for Barnstable High School. Also, Lily DeCheco set the Barnstable record in the one-mile race, as I said, recently reported. So great job. Team. Just one more thing I wanted to look at. This is something that's been new this year. We have Athletes of the Month for every team and two athletes per team. Again, recognizing our student athletes that are working hard on a day-to-day basis and making contributions. So this was something that was encouraging to me. We have Riley King here for girls hockey. Gabe Picardo for boys basketball. We have a familiar face, Haley Judge, representing girls swimming. And Adam Forrest for boys wrestling. So new this year, Athlete of the Month, two athletes, making sure that we're recognizing those folks that are working hard on a day-to-day basis. And I believe this is sponsored by Jersey Mikes.
Yep, yeah.
You know, so they get, you know, Jersey Mikes appreciate the, the sponsorship. And then just in conclusion, Teacher Appreciation Day. We had, and I know we do this in the win, in the fall with football. So it being winter sports, this was in recognizing our, our basketball teams. So a number of students, a number of teachers. Teacher Appreciation Day, again, kind of dovetailing with what we're talking about, making sure, you know, that we help the helpers and make, and make, make it known that they are valued and validating them. So this was over the last few weeks. And just in conclusion, again, it was in conjunction with our, our basketball teams. Our boys basketball team last Tuesday against DY at home had a buzzer beater. A student hit a, you know, I believe it was a Gabe, no, it was not Gabe, but hit a shot from basically 40 feet out to win the game at the buzzer against, against DY. And it was quite a moment for, for all parties concerned. So that was great to see.
Excellent. Excellent.
Andre, can you go back and, those T-shirts are aw, can you go back to one, that, yeah, one goal, one family? No, next one. No, one more. There we go. Those are great.
Yeah.
I like that. That's awesome. I like that, that message. Great message. Awesome. Great job.
Yeah, thank you, Andre. I hope you continue doing this. I like that. Honestly, I really do. I like your effort. I mean, you're putting the effort in to get the pictures and stuff like that. And good work.
Things that are going on in our schools on a day-to-day basis.
And I know you've, you and I have talked about this, and I know like you've, you've, like, you're like, Mike, but I want to put pictures with it. Because we talk about the good things, but you know what? When you have the pictures of it, it, good work. Excellent job.
Appreciate it, Mike. And just to show people, you know, put a face to a name.
Okay, well, now I gotta move on to 3.5 Superintendent's Report. Sarah.
Thank you. And the student envoys talked about it, too, but in conjunction with the Athletes of the Month, they are doing Students of the Month at the high school. And I think 31, I think it was 31 were recognized for January. So kind of expanding that idea. So today's February 1, and February is Black History Month. Black History Month had its origins dating back to Chicago in 1915, when historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson traveled from Washington DC to participate in a national celebration of the 50th anniversary of emancipation at an event sponsored by the state of Illinois. Inspired by this celebration, he founded what is now the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. He envisioned a week-long celebration to encourage the coordinated teaching of Black history in public schools. He designated the second week of February towards this effort and galvanized fellow historians through ASALH in 1926. Fifty years after these first celebrations, President Gerald R. Ford officially Fifty years after these first celebrations, President Gerald R. Ford officially recognized Black History Month during the country's 1976 bicentennial, calling upon Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. So we in the Barnstable Public Schools bring awareness and recognize Black History Month, and I've encouraged members of our school community to also be sure to recognize Black history through all months of the year. I wanted to use this moment as an opportunity to talk a little bit further with the committee and with the community about student behavior and our approach to student discipline. A couple of things have come up over the past week or so, as I've engaged families in listening sessions, and we've had some really, I think, constructive conversations. So I wanted to convey these thoughts in a broader setting. Last summer, during our Summer Leadership Institute, the district leadership team affirmed that our goals of responding to misconduct include stopping the rule-breaking behavior with consequences consistent with BPS procedures. Another goal is maintaining a safe and orderly environment. We also help students recognize and fix their mistakes. We help students develop internal control of their behavior, and we seek to preserve the dignity of the child and the group. There are several policies that govern specific matters involving student behavior, such as conduct on school buses or bullying, but there is one overarching policy, JK, related to student discipline that we follow in the Massachusetts general laws. We strive at all times to stay true to the school committee policy of approaching our responses with fairness relating to the individual's needs and the individual's circumstances. Building rules are an extension of this policy and are more specific as they relate to the individual schools. Those are found in the school handbooks. The leadership team has been working towards a more coordinated and consistent approach through a developmental lens. In addition to being responsive to student behaviors, school codes of conduct also include provisions for positive behavior interventions and supports. You've heard about some of these at recent meetings, including some of the positive recognitions that are happening at BIS through assemblies that they are holding. Schools across the country are experiencing instances of additional misconduct, aggression, and dysregulated students, as we return from school disruptions during the pandemic, and we work as a community to assist children in navigating very complicated times and issues. Conversation, education, and discussion can go a long way, and we encourage families with questions or concerns to reach out to their child's school administrators for additional clarification. Sometimes messages that circulate across the community contain incorrect facts. We, as a district, are limited by privacy laws and what we can share about specific students, but we may be able to assist families by hearing concerns and sharing additional general information. We can always get better, and we are working hard towards that end collectively as a team across the district. The last thing that I want to share with the school committee this evening is just to note that I'm looking forward on Friday, February 3rd, where the Cape Cod Collaborative will be hosting a legislative forum. They are holding it again on Zoom this year, after trying to bring it back in person. I think it was the first event that I attended last year, officially having been appointed as your incoming superintendent of schools, and I look forward to attending again. As we are one of the districts that hosts the collaborative, they've asked me to say a few opening remarks as we begin the session. So looking forward to that early on Friday morning. And I was going to share and brag about the enrichment clusters, but I think the students spoke for themselves. So that concludes my report.
Do we have any questions? No? I just have one question. I know you said that you'd met with parent, parent groups.
Mm-hmm.
What age, what was it all, what age, was it across the spectrum?
It was across the, it was across the district. I set up four different sessions on four different nights, in person and on Zoom. I set up one group to focus on elementary students, one group to focus on middle and high school, or intermediate in high school. I set up one group to discuss how we can support our multilingual learners, and one group to support, to discuss how we can support our BIPOC students.
Okay, so excellent.
And I had about seventy people sign up, and made also some connections, too, to further go out into the community and engage with families.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, thank you for that work. Thank you. Any other questions? Are we all set? All set? Okay. Were you hitting something, Joe?
Yeah, just, yeah. And again, you know, it is, it is, you know, Black History Month, and again, I'm just going to chime in. I think we could have a Black History Year with a course. I think Black History is really important, when you think back, you know, the Little Rock Nine, that famous photo of, you know, the mob trying to prevent these young Black students. I mean, they're still around, they're in their eighties, you know, like, that's my parents' age. So, you know, it wasn't that long ago. I mean, it was only nineteen, in 1968, it was against the law for Blacks and Whites to marry in, in some states. I mean, that, you know, to students who are in high school, that seems like seven thousand years ago, but to any adult in the community, you realize that, you know, over half of the Senate in the United States right now, the sitting members of the Senate or of marrying age in the United States, when in some states in the United States, it was against the law for them to marry a person that wasn't the same race as them. So they lived through that, you know? So Black History is, is happening now, and the things that you read about in history books wasn't that long ago. And to create that through line for students maybe could help create some understanding. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, moving on to 3.6 Assistant Superintendent Report. Kristin.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a few items. Just to start off with, we are running a Math Acceleration Academy. This is our second year running this. It's grant-funded through DESI, so I just wanted to give you a little update on that. The Math Acceleration Academy occurs during school vacations, and so we're running a session in February vacation, and then we'll be running a new session in April. The, so, you know, the goal is to, you know, provide this additional support, math support for students, really with this, through this lens of, you know, some disrupted learning through COVID, and so it's part of that ongoing work. So we'll be running a program at two sites. One is at BUE for grades three through five, and the other is at BIS for grades six through eight. And for those of you who don't think people love math, we have, of the invitations that were sent out, we have sixty-five students, grades three through five, attending at BUE, and fifty students in grades five through eight will be attending at BIS. The grant does require, it has some parameters around student-teacher ratio, so we have eight very committed educators who also love math, that will be working in our, at BUE, and five teachers will be working with our students in the grade six through eight program. We also have some teacher assistants that will be part of the program, and students are provided breakfast, lunch, and transportation as part of the grant. Having visited the classrooms last year during the February vacation session, it is really pretty spectacular to see, you know, you think this is school vacation, and without a doubt, every student, every teacher smiles on their faces, really truly enjoying and engaging in the math. So, very, Joe, I, I see ya, I know.
Big smile, including you, and Joe.
It is, it is a sight to see, so I would invite you, you know, if you're out and about February break, it is Tuesday through Friday, instead, because the Monday is the holiday. And so I'll continue to, you know, share as that comes out and, and update again when we hit the April, but the involvement of both staff and students.
Can I just ask you a question? So are those two separate groups, or if you do it February vacation, do you also come back in April? Or is it like two separate, like, you only do one weeks, one week of the academy?
If students want to come back for more, they're more than welcome.
They had so much fun and...
But they also don't have to attend February to attend April.
Okay, so it's not like a continuation form or whatever?
Exactly.
Okay.
Sorry.
Somewhat related question. So I am aware that the high school is also running an extra math program for the students who needed some extra direction in pre-algebra and algebra. I believe that started already on Saturdays.
Yes, they're running four Saturdays, and I think they're calling it Math Bootcamp. And actually, Tina Crook, who is organizing this, she texted me a couple of pictures last weekend, and I think it was the second Saturday, she said they came back. So again, you know, the, the students, the teachers, you know, really engaged and involved. So it is really, it's just impressive to see, and the commitment of the students and, of course, the educators, but really looking for, they appreciate the support.
Yeah, I, I remember, I went to the kickoff night when they were giving the information session, and the senior cap was filled, pretty much filled with people. It was, and I said, oh, boy, this is, this is a lot of work, because they were a chatty bunch, but they were very engaged in learning about what was to come. So that's why I asked about it.
Yep, so there are, you know, a lot of, you know, programs going on to, to support our students, you know, both during the day and outside of the school day. I also just wanted to add on, as far as, I know that the student envoys shared about the high school showcase. It is in the window of time from 5:30 to 7:30. It's not, there's not a set schedule, it's a drop-in, it's a swing-by anytime, so people shouldn't feel like they have to be there for the full two hours. They'll get a map, they'll get, you know, kind of a list of what the various locations are, what they can see, what they can engage with, but then the map. So it's very self-guided, but there'll be plenty of volunteers in the building to direct as well. So I just wanted to add that, so people don't feel like it might be a full evening. It's very fluid. And then, building a little bit off of Andre's, just you started with the, the Military Support Club. I would like to also give a shout-out to the Varsity Hockey Team, who was also there, engaging in that. And I just want to read a quick text message that was sent to the coach, who had shared some pictures, but thank you to all the hockey players that helped with the blanket project for homeless. We made fifty blankets on Tuesday that are going to the shelters and the homeless in Barnstable. The guys were very quick tying knots, must be from lacing up skates. So they really appreciate the help, and again, it was just nice to see two, two groups, you know, distinct groups from the high school engaged in that, and I believe the Rotary Club also participated. But again, just really nice to see students out and about. A quick reminder that Wednesday, February 8th, is an early dismissal day for students, so that staff can continue on for the second half of the day to engage in professional learning that afternoon. And then finally, I just want to do a little staff shout-out that came across my phone yesterday. So Cape Country 104.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
Has paired with First Citizens Federal Credit Union to recognize some members of our community, the teachers, educators, mentors, and coaches in our local schools. And each month, each month, they invite listeners to nominate a teacher or educator why they deserve to be honored as the Teacher/Educator of the Month. So January's recipient was Centerville Elementary's very own Mary Robbins, the librarian. A colleague nominated her for this recognition, and Mary was selected of all the, of all of the submissions. And I'll just want to read this submission to you. Mary is the most amazing elementary librarian. In addition to being sweet and kind, which is very true, she is an amazing storyteller. She captivates the kids and adults when she reads a story each class. The way she reads is just so engaging, it definitely inspires readers at a young age. She teaches the kids all about information you can get from a book, the different kinds of genres, authors, et cetera, and at the end of the year, she makes a giant interactive Jeopardy game for each grade level. She is quick to find a book that you might want last minute for a special student, or to jump in and help kids with a game or puzzle they're working on. Mary is always calm and approachable and ready to help. We're so lucky to have her at Centerville Elementary. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to Mary Robbins. I think this is well-deserved.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions?
And I just want, the, just a public survey. It is going to be, talking about the blankets and the, for the, for the homeless, it's, I think the wind chill, I mean, I think the real feel is going to be negative twenty-five on a Saturday.
Yeah, it's supposed to be Friday into Saturday, yeah.
To put that into mathematical perspective, that's fifty-seven degrees below freezing. Fifty-seven degrees above freezing is eighty-nine. So you know what it's like when it's eighty-nine out? You're like, oh, man, it's hot, and then go to freezing. It's freezing. Now go on the other side of freezing, the same distance, that's how cold it's going to be. It's going to be dangerously cold, so check up if you have some, you know, some people that you do wellness checks, you know, keep up with them, because it's, it's going to be a dangerous weekend for some.
Okay, moving on to old business, 4.1, approved 2023-2024 School Committee Meeting Calendar. Is there any other changes or anything that we want to bring up? No? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the 2023-2024 School Committee Meetings Calendar is presented in tonight's materials.
Second. Having a motion, second, and voiced for, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Passed unanimously. Moving on to new business, 5.1, Superintendent Entry Plan Report of Findings. Sarah.
Thank you. So I have a, a PowerPoint to share with you, and I do so with great humility. I'm the newcomer here. I've been officially on the job for seven months. So this is presented as a draft to reflect back to you the things that I'm learning about and hearing from members of the community. I am looking for feedback from you and from others to see if what I've identified, I've gotten right. I feel like I'm on the right track, because I don't know that there will be much of any surprises here. I feel like you, as a committee, in engaging for a superintendent search, just by the nature of the questions that you asked, you know your community, and you knew and know the challenges and the opportunities that exist here, so, as well as the strengths. So I don't think that there will be many surprises, but I am looking forward to sharing with you all that I've learned and what I've been working on, and, and look for, look for your input. So as you know, I started a transition plan back in February, met with many of you at that time, and began the process of meeting with those closest to the superintendent's office, and then officially launched an entry in July, specifically looking for data that I could hear from people, meeting with community members in the district. What could I read about, including data and documentation, and making observations in classrooms, schools, and community spaces, all around an essential question of what are the strengths and opportunities here in Barnstable. I may have missed a few things along the way, but I've tried to catalog some of my activities in terms of who I've been listening to and meeting with, whether individually or in groups. So really within the schools, talking with you as school committee members and meeting with administrators. I met with the faculty and staff of each building through voluntary faculty meetings, and I conducted a survey back in November that three hundred and fifty-five people returned. I convened and had, had an opportunity to meet with faculty and staff members of color who shared their specific perspective, which I think is important to note. I've been meeting with union leadership and rekindling relationships there through monthly meetings. True Delight was meeting with students, having met with focus groups for pizza at BUES and BIS. Those groups were selected by counselors and the principal and assistant principals, specifically to broadly represent the diversity of the student body. And at BHS, I met with six different groups of students. I met with the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. I met with a group of eighth, ninth, and tenth graders, met with eleventh and twelfth graders, I met with the top five percent of the senior class, I met with students who are multilingual learners, and I met with students who identify as Black, Indigenous, or a person of color to have specific focus group conversations. All in all, I met with about eighty students, and the high school students either enjoyed breakfast or sandwiches. I just noticed that, that, or as I just mentioned with Chairperson Judge's question, I met with families in recent weeks. About seventy people had signed up, although a few folks didn't show, and I attended a CPAC and a new, a new organization that Karina de Silva, our EL director, has started, an LPAC, which is a parent advisory council for English learner families. I've also been meeting with people in the community, including the town manager and assistant town manager, as well as some town department staff. Invited elected officials to meet, including members of the town council, and I met with several of our elected representatives here on the Cape and Islands. I met with the police chief and officers from our SRO unit. I met with four of the five fire chiefs within town. I had a fifth meeting, but he was called away to an emergency. Met with the regional emergency management personnel. I met with and took a tour of Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. I met with Bob Stanwarren there, and I also met with the executive director and took a tour of... I met with Bob Stanborn there. And I also met with the executive director and took a tour of Sturgis. Have to orient my east. Had to orient myself with geographically, but I took a tour of Sturgis East. I've been getting to know the regional superintendents and the Cape Cod collaborative officials, also having taken a tour at the school within Barnstable that they, that they have over at Bumps River Road. I met with a few Cape Cod Community College officials, several representatives from local mental health agencies. I attended a Business Improvement District breakfast and had a couple follow-up meetings with individuals from that, and have gotten to know some of the representatives from Barnstable. No place for hate. There may be more, and I'm sorry if I forgot anybody, but the community has been incredibly welcoming and eager to share their perspective and identify opportunities with the schools. Continuing on, also looking at data and document review. I'm sure there's things that I'm overlooking, but policies and our procedures and forms, reviewing collective bargaining agreements, even participating in some finalization of some of those. Previous budgets, student achievement data, human resources materials, presentations and expectations that are relevant to our town finance office, district and school handbooks. I spent the summer really kind of poring over all of those and gave them a lot of careful attention. The athletic handbooks, any program reviews that we have done recently, including in areas like special education, student services, and athletics, and the program of studies. Available curriculum materials and report cards, registration materials, school and district improvement plans, publicly available information through the Department of Education, our discipline data, as well as our discipline materials and suspension letters. Kind of randomly gone into standards for success and looked at observation and evaluation materials. Looked at previous meeting agendas for the school committee and leadership team. The principals know that I'm kind of scanning in the background, not so much to micromanage, but just so I can stay in tune to what's going on across the district so they share their meeting and professional development agendas with me. I review school newsletters, have taken a look at our websites and social media accounts. I look at newspaper articles and read the Cape Cod Times Daily, and selected certainly not all of our vendor contracts. In terms of making observations, with the exception of the month of January, I've been doing monthly visits to schools with principals, although I do go more frequently as needed. But we have some regular meetings to discuss matters of importance, tour classrooms and workspaces, touring the buildings and grounds with both the principals and facilities director, touring specifically with the athletic director of the high school grounds, and attendance at selected events as my schedule allows. I'm looking forward to having some open room now that some of my evening sessions are done. I'm missing the winter sports season, so I look forward to getting to some of those events as well as some of the things that are coming up like Mary Poppins. These will not end. I will continue to engage. This is, in many ways, part of my regular practice and how I engage in my work. So the meetings and the document review and data and observations will not, will not end. When I met with the students, I asked all of the groups to share a word with me at the end of our discussion to describe their experience. And I told them that they could repeat the same word, and I put it in a Wordle, Word Cloud engine. And this is what your students, our students, are saying about their school experience. The larger the word, the more frequently that word showed up in the conversation as they were sharing their words with me, and the number one word that came up was diversity. The second word was fun. That came more from the younger students that I met with. And the other words are representative of what, what the kids were saying. There are some, there's a great variety in these words in, in terms of challenging and complicated. There's also respectful, amazing, and safe. I did include seguro and difícil to recognize directly what some of our multilingual learners were saying. Seguro meaning safe and difícil meaning difficult. Not all experiences are reflected as positive. I noted one student chose racism. And indeed, our conversations, which I conducted with the principals, uncovered some previously unreported bullying. And I assure you that the principal is following up with the appropriate response. So the first part of the question is, what are the strengths within the Barnstable Public Schools? And what are the opportunities? So first, the strengths. And again, these are, this is a draft, and so I am open to input from you and others in the community. But similar to the student saying that the word that encapsulates their experience with diversity, multiple, multiple people over the course of the, of the conversations that I've had have shared their perspective that the greatest strength of our community is the diversity among our students and families. Within all of these strengths, there also exists, exist opportunities to strengthen what are our strengths and to capitalize on them. And just as I noted, that there were some really positive experiences. There are also some positive, negative experiences that our students are feeling, and that was also reflected at times by faculty. So I think it's important that we take steps to make sure that each member of the community feels a sense of belonging. And I think we're doing so. Unified sports is one example. But other things that people noted that would go a long way include things like reducing language barriers and a real desire for an increased level of family engagement. And I'll talk more about that when we get to opportunities. Another area of strength that was noted over and over again is the dedication of our faculty and staff, which was cited among numerous community groups that I spoke with. And then data is supportive of that in terms of the educators tending to be very committed to the district. We have people who have spent a lot of time here in their career. They have grown here. They have developed, developed throughout their career. And our data is above the state level for retention consistently. And then I have personally witnessed and observed numerous times that Barnstable educators have rallied around students and families as well as each other. And then third is a, is a true strength, I think, and it's very unique and very specific to Barnstable. And it has to do with our location in the region. It has to do with our size. And my quote is at the bottom. Sorry, it's getting a little cut off, which is that "The breadth of opportunities afforded to students in Barnstable would be the envy of any school district in the Commonwealth." I really, I think if there's any surprises that I come to see is that, is that we may not shout it out enough. We may not celebrate enough. We may not recognize it enough. And really, truly, coming in with a lens from Off Cape, from Franklin, who was trying to do many of these same things, this really would be the envy of any school district in the Commonwealth. And when I talk about that, I'm speaking about things like our enrichment opportunities, some of which maybe took a hit during COVID, but I see people bringing back with gusto, including the fine and performing arts. SEL came up loud and clear with people being very proud that Barnstable is a SEL leader in the Cape Cod region. Our high school course offerings are incredible. And the ones that I've selected are ones that I haven't seen elsewhere, although there's plenty of creative ones that don't exist in most schools, but fashion, cartooning and animation, understanding diversity, criminal justice, Black Studies, global issues, entrepreneurship. Finance stood out to me. My stepdaughter is a sophomore in college, and she picked marketing as her major, but she took her first finance course and said if she had known what finance involved, she would have gone into finance as a major. She didn't know marketing either. It was kind of a, she actually started in hospitality. But I guess my point is that just offering all of these gives students an opportunity to see what they might like or what they might not want to do. Music technology, hip-hop, the influence and trends, coastal ecology, pathology and biotechnology. I just went on and on and on. This is a long presentation, so I won't continue with this list. But if you just open up the program of studies, it's really unbelievable what students have available to them. In addition, at the high school, the career pathways are truly, truly noteworthy with students being able to pursue areas of interest and passion in the health careers, environmental science, engineering, business, education, culinary, law, society, and criminal justice, and computer science. Elsewhere in the district, or throughout the entire district, Gateway has come up as a real strength. I think Barnstable ought to be proud for having a gifted and talented program and for having done so for so long in a state that doesn't mandate it or even really recognize it like other states do. Recently, we've been having conversations about the ways in which the current director has been expanding access for students to Gateway and reducing barriers and opening up Gateway for more children. But the students, over and over again, talked about how Gateway, and I think in many similar ways, PBL falls into the same category, really supported them. It was their passion. It's what they loved and really drew them to, and engaged them in, in their schooling. The special education services are strong. I think because of our size, we offer a strong continuum that smaller districts would not be able to do. We have two alternative education programs at the high school with ACE and Project Excel, and then a focus of PBL in multiple locations, which you heard about directly tonight. In terms of opportunities, we have extensive co-curriculars, extracurriculars, and enrichments, including over 50 clubs at Barnstable High School. Our athletics is strong, and Andre King talked notably about that tonight and at other points in time. Fine arts and performing arts, I think just walking around the high school, you can see the investment in the fine arts with the murals that are on the walls as one example. The performing arts with the Performing Arts Center and the comeback that is being made by our performance groups. We have middle school opportunities, and we are bringing back field trips. And then also, I think, very unique to Barnstable, a number of examples came up already this evening in terms of community relationships and partnerships. We have some very generous and devoted local donors, including the Cobb Trust, the Skendee Foundation, Cape Cod Five, among others. We have a lot of partners that sponsor students with high school internships, but also at the younger grades, BCIS with the enrichment clusters, relationship with Cape Cod Community College, health service agencies in Barnstable. As I had mentioned, the mental health groups had reached out to me. Parent-teacher organizations supporting students, particularly in the younger schools. The town recreation department affords students a wealth of opportunities with HYCC in particular, and then a number of community groups that are invested in both schools and the overall well-being of the community. So it really is a remarkable, remarkable place to be. I've identified four areas of opportunity. Again, I don't think that they're going to come as a huge surprise, although I welcome your input and feedback. The first one, I've lumped a few things in an area around a strong desire and need to come together as a community. People shared sentiments of feeling disconnected. Many people I spoke with cited that the two grade-span schools, grade four, five, grade six, seven, are particularly, are particular concerns in terms of continuity. But I would say that the configuration of BUES and BIS is not the only driver of these feelings. People have reflected a sense of loss. I would say tonight, we heard how things are making a comeback. So the enrichment clusters is the first time that they've done them in three years. The field trips, some of the senior events that our student envoys talked about. People are mourning that loss and getting back to some of the events. And people have remarked over and over how, how they'd like to see more of those, more of that positivity. People are reflecting feelings of fatigue and stress and trauma-based responses. We've all been through a huge collective trauma with the pandemic. But there's also, I think, individuals who have a lot going on in their lives, students and families and staff alike. And we're seeing an escalation of maladaptive behaviors, and that's causing stress. We've talked a little bit about that tonight, and we'll be spending more time addressing that. I've seen some pockets where I think the curriculum is discontinuous. They, this came up in some budget conversations in particular. So I think there's an opportunity to create more of a through line in terms of our curriculum. And faculty have reflected wanting to feel like part of a more cohesive whole. Heard people remark around a desire for more consistent and positive communication as well as seeking opportunities for additional clarity. That might be because in places, we're working towards more consistency of practice. The pandemic, but it might not all be the pandemic. I think really threw everybody's systems up in the air. And districts everywhere are putting the pieces back together and maybe coming back together a little differently. But there's also been a lot of turnover. There's been a lot of turnover of leadership, and that can create some, some questions of clarity, questions of expectations. So there's an opportunity there. A need to continue to work toward a sense of belonging is something that has been talked about previous to my arrival. But again, I think that there are some, some folks saying that they, that there may be some barriers to kind of feeling that they truly belong, and I think we can work towards those. Encouragement to focus on the positive and celebrate successes. And then I also see an opportunity to create some priorities. Sometimes it feels like there's so much going on, and you can go in all sorts of directions. And so to that end, both Joe and Andre talked about a vision of a graduate, which I have also talked a little bit with Mike about. And it's something that I think we can do to bring, to initially, there's a lot of work to do, I think, to build and foster a culture, but to work together to, to vision and work towards a common goal of what the community sees as a consensus of the skills that our students need for their future. And then we align budget. We align our goals. We align decision-making towards that, towards that vision. And so I'm looking forward to that. We talked about it as part of the subcommittee. And it's tied with the accreditation process at the high school. But in my mind, that would make it feel far too like a compliance exercise. And I think doing it district-wide would be really, really meaningful for everybody. So in the second area, kind of continuing to focus on academics and SEL. And in that SEL realm, I would hang a sign on behavior, recognizing that we have an escalation of maladaptive behaviors in our school buildings. Seeing a desire and need to focus on instruction following remote and hybrid learning models. What are some of the best things that we can take away from those periods of time? But what did we also learn about the power of in-person learning, the strength of relationships, the importance of the relationship between the teacher and students and among students? We know that we have an increased level of skill gaps among students. For me, I feel like that's pretty noticeable, grades four, five, and six, seven, when you go into a classroom and you see skill gaps there. And teachers are working really hard to address them, but how might we work smarter and provide the right supports to do so? Heard and have seen concerns about student engagement and concerns about student behavior and consequences. And I, I think they're linked to instruction. I think they're linked to the purpose of why we respond to behaviors is to, to educate children in order to change. In terms of the curriculum, as you know, there has been a purchase of software, Atlas Rubicon. So we have an opportunity for more documentation. This will help make curriculum more predictable, make it more transparent. There's an increased level of interest in what schools are teaching and questions from families about the curriculum. But it would also help people vertically understand what's happening above and below, as well as horizontally. And I heard from teachers K to three that they really want to work more across buildings. Key focus areas, we can't do everything all at once. So I would suggest having something of a predictable curriculum review cycle. So we spread it around, and we kind of know what's coming. There's- There's budget, budget reasons for that, there's professional development reasons for that, there's also capacity reasons for that. And so literacy and math are on the horizon. You're continuing to make sure that we're investing well in social, emotional learning and providing the right types of interventions around behavior. English language development should, you know, come as no surprise that there's more work to be done there in terms of the curriculum. Special education, making sure that we have a, a strong continuum of services for students, which is a huge challenge, not just for us within the district, but also, I think, in the field of special education, especially with staffing. Making sure we're including multiple perspectives. This is something that I heard from students and something that I heard from families as well as teachers. We talked about it a little bit tonight with Black History Month, making sure that multiple perspectives and diverse representation is within the curriculum. And one, one parent in particular spoke very eloquently about that as a vehicle to children feeling like they belong. And attending to students' mental and physical health is also an opportunity and area of focus in this, in this realm. The third opportunity, again, I feel like I'm reading some of your questions to me back to you tonight, but this is the sense that I've made of them, which is around, you know, what does it mean to grow your own? And I think there is a real need for talent development. We have some significant staffing challenges, although I think we're faring better than perhaps I expected, but I can see the trends. We've got a high cost of living and, and not enough housing. We have a goal, a worthy goal of diversifying our educator workforce because of its positive impact on students, and we have some very hard-to-fill positions, including ones that are highly specialized roles, as well as really critical support positions like bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and substitute teachers. Our traditional recruitment and retention efforts are not as effective as they used to be. You've gotten more creative with bonuses, for example, but I think we need to have a concerted effort to do more. We've been talking a lot about developing career ladders and providing incentives. My understanding in talking with the union is that there may have been some of this in the past. Putting a very intentional focus on retention. I know our data supports, supports that we have good retention, but we want to make sure it stays that way. And we want to make sure it stays that way, especially for educators from diverse backgrounds who maybe some, you know, kind of both here and then kind of in the field, don't always feel like they fully belong. And engage in additional outreach. I think the opportunity to grow from within will require a specific and concerted focus on PD with human resources implications. And then we also, I think, have an opportunity to develop a strong PD plan for staff, which speaks a little bit to the idea of a vision of an educator. What do our educators need to support the vision we have for students? And then the last area, again, I don't think this will come as a surprise, is around facilities, enrollment, and future planning. So spending a lot of time looking at our buildings as a, as a really important resource. We have a portfolio of aging school buildings. I think Mike and his team do a tremendous job at maintenance, but our oldest school, BCIS, was built in the 40s, and I think we have a couple that were built in the 50s. We have a significant list of capital improvement projects with additional ones to be planning for. We are looking at enrollment trends with long-term seeing an overall decrease, but we've stabilized, and you'll see some tonight in the budget presentation, and we're also showing some signs of growth at the elementary schools. We're using our space differently, too. We've got more specialized programs, we have more specialized services, and that requires us to rethink how space gets used. I already talked about concerns that were presented about two, two-grade schools, and I feel that I need to kind of convey that there were members in the community expressing concerns about grade eight at the high school. We have space constraints at many schools, as you know, which has brought up concerns about equity as well as adequacy. And we're anticipating the three-year lease of portables at two of our sites to be coming this summer, but other needs are emerging. So it's an opportunity. I don't quite know what the, what the ultimate sort of status will be as we're awaiting two reports, one, a facilities conditions assessment, and one, an enrollment forecast, which should give us a picture over the next decade of what we might expect for student enrollment. But that is another kind of big area. And that's not to say that other things didn't come up. Plenty, plenty of stuff came up, including, for example, public comment with the question about seven periods for students at the high school. But I purposefully looked really big picture, really long-term from the seat of superintendent and the entire system. Those other matters, you know, didn't necessarily make it here, but I did hear lots and lots of other details that, and have taken a lot in. So in terms of next steps, I'm seeking input from you and feedback from you, as well as we'll be sharing it with community stakeholders. Going to be talking about this with faculty and staff at next week's Professional Development Day, although I did share the presentation with them earlier this evening, with the idea that we, once, once I get the feedback and sort of codify this into some, some final strengths and opportunities, work with you and the leadership team, as well as other community members to develop some long-term goals. So be happy to take any questions or hear your comments. Tonight, or input and feedback in the weeks to come.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody have any questions? What do you want to? Go ahead, Joe.
Say, yeah, very thorough.
Excellent.
I noticed you didn't put any graphs up there, so I'm just going to stop. Kristen must have told you not to, give you a warning not to put anything up there, but no, it was a great job. Glad to have you. Keep up the great work. Thanks.
Thank you. If you wanted any data, I mean, there are graphs behind some of this. I just kept it at a high level.
That was your copy. Joe had the graphs. Anybody else?
Yeah, just for me, add on to what Joe said, you know, in terms of the breadth of information, looking as the superintendent from your chair at the macro lens, you know, but as we are having the conversations, you noted certain priority areas. You know, I think that the, the empirical weight, the amount of information that you've included in here, can be a foundation for the discussions that we're, we're going to be having, so that, you know, when we're talking about these different issues, whatever the priority that is brought before us, you know, we can, we can discuss it from an empirical lens. I know that when things happen, you know, we, we respond sometimes, you know, you know, very, sometimes our response, you know, can be in the moment, you know, in terms of what's happening. Again, you noted trauma-informed levels of stress, and so that impacts how we respond to a situation. But in order to get it right, you have to take a step back and, and look at the overall lens and the data that we have, you know, to make the right decision, okay, rather than the split decision. And so again, to Joe's point, you know, very thorough, a year of work, I've gathered data, data gathering, excuse me, data gathering. You know, but I just feel like now, this is not just something that you did for a report because it's scheduled in the agenda, and you have to do it as a part of your role, but this can be leaned on and relied upon when we're making informed decisions that we want to be effective in the moment and going forward.
Peter, you got anything, or are you all set?
All set, thanks.
Okay, all set? Okay, Kathy?
For the most part, I'm all set. I, I do agree, it was very thorough, and I, you don't look exhausted, so, but you have to be exhausted with all those meetings, because I know there were a lot more meetings than what you even noted for this evening. When you were going through the interview process, I had found the profile of a graduate, and I was, I had meant to bring it up to you and never had the chance, and so I was glad to see that you would like to incorporate that and develop one for Barnstable. That was one of the pieces that I found was unique about you, that you didn't bring to the table during your interviews, and I think the community will appreciate that as well as the students, because I think it instills the purpose of why we're here, K to 12, and then some beyond H22. So I look forward to that profile of a graduate.
Excellent work.
Thank you.
Excellent work. I kind of know a little bit of how much work you've done on this, just because we kind of were talking as you were going through it, but the amount of hours you've put in just shows you how much you care and how you do want to make a difference. And I, you kind of look at this as like the footprint of the beginning, and like Andre said, this is just, this isn't just a report. I can guarantee you that, that our superintendent, this is her kind of taking it now and putting the rubber with her to the road. This is what she's going to use as kind of a, a good chunk of your guiding principles. And I also think it's kind of, it's always good to have somebody come from the outside and kind of take stock with the, whatever, whether it's a school department, or a fire department, or whatever the case may be, because you kind of have a different lens of looking at it from the outside. So I mean, you're going to find things that are working, you have to find things that aren't working, and like how you're bringing in a different knowledge of how you can fix those things, because you kind of get, this is the way we do it in Barnstable, and you kind of bring in a different lens to that. So that's, that's phenomenal, but excellent work. Good job.
Thank you.
So anything else? Anybody else? Nothing?
No, just very thorough. I didn't mean to skip. I was very impressed, very impressed.
I'm exhausted. Just thinking about not just going to put the slides together, but actually do the things in the slides.
Well, like Kathy said, the amount, she kind of didn't even come close to put down the amount of meetings she had and the amount of people she met with. I know for a fact that there was way, we'd be here for another hour if she talked about all the people she really actually met with, so honestly, awesome job.
Thank you.
And very, like, and one of the things that she told me about that she found really neat about Barnstable is, and I kind of started thinking about it, is how much community support we have. Like, it's just, it's like a, it's big, but it's still like that small-town atmosphere. And she was like, yeah, one of the things is just how many, how many people truly, it takes a village to raise kids, and like, we truly bring that to life, and it's, I kind of started, like, she was telling me some of the things, and I'm like, oh, yeah, like, I kind of, it's just the way Barnstable does it, you know what I mean? But for her, it was like, wow, that's really cool. So to hear it from her, it was kind of neat when she started going through it with me. So thank you, and we will, if anybody has any questions or comments, just reach out to Sarah over the next couple of weeks, and we'll keep, she'll keep it going. So now we're going to move on to 5.2, approve revised policy, JH student attendance. Kathy?
All right. So this has been pulled out of Section J. It's a first read of the policy. It's not for action tonight. It first came to the attention of the subcommittee when attorney Michael Joyce, who works with the district on insurance, ensuring compliance, came up with a few concerns and suggestions. The markup is, has been posted, and everybody has access to the original, a lot of updated language, and to bring it in line with how we're making sure that the policy is broad-based and not procedural, and then that gives the flexibility of developing procedures for the different grade levels.
So this is the first read?
Yes, and if you have any questions or comments, the ideal situation would be to bring it to our attention before next Friday, so that when the committee meets again, we can discuss it.
Okay. So any questions, just send them to Kathy. Moving on to 5.3, Advisory Committee on School Culture and Climate Extension. So just for the public, this is usually every year. I think it's been going on, Joe, for, this is the third year? Does that sound right? Yeah, I think this has been going on for the third, I think this is the third year. This will be going into the fourth year. We're just finishing the third year.
It started before COVID, then...
Yeah, and then COVID happened, and...
I don't really, that's a blow.
Yeah. So Andre and Joe are the chairs of this, so every year, we look for any of our subcommittees to, well, not really Kathy's for policies, because that's just going to be done, it's going to be done. When it's done, it's done. Yeah, so, but we look every year to, whether we want to fine-tune it, whether we want to keep it the way it is, whatever we want to do. And over the years, we've had subcommittees where we've kind of changed what they did, we've changed all kinds of different things, so that's kind of what, it's a year, yearly opportunity to look at that. So Joe or Andre, do you guys want to kind of talk about what's going, I mean, you kind of already did, I understand that, but looking at it from a more of a broad picture, do you want to talk at all about, about it, or kind of?
I think everybody's pretty cool with moving forward. We're hoping to get to you, like, pick Sarah's brain about ways to move forward with the, you know, in a collective fashion, putting together what we want our vision to be, what it means to be Barnstable, and picking brains and kind of figuring out to the community how we want to kind of shape this thing, you know? So, I don't know. Andre, what do you say?
Yeah, I think Sarah joining the subcommittee was reassuring for many members, and for me, the reason that I'm devoted and committed to the Culture and Climate Committee is because I think, you know, I do truly believe that that is the foundation, you know, for the success that we want to have amongst all stakeholder groups. You know, again, one of the important things that, you know, we worked on in, in recent meetings is, and just is just from people that have been on the subcommittee for longer than myself, is just in terms of establishing that we do have the different stakeholder groups, you know, that some people join the committee, you know, really looking for an emphasis on, on educators. You know, they were looking at the culture and climate for educators, and that's something that needed to be highlighted, need to be recognized, so, so on and forth. Myself coming in, you know, new, I'm looking at the culture and climate from a more building district perspective, you know, but then, so, you know, the point of fact is, you know, when we talk about the outcomes that we want to see, you know, I feel that it starts with a feeling of investment from the individual stakeholders, a feeling of self-interest, that I have, I'm a part of this, and this is related to something that I care about. And then if I'm not a part of, if I don't feel like I'm a part of this, and it's not related to anything that I care about, I feel that that's when you begin to have your issues. And so culture and climate is at the heart of that. So specific, you know, so I think that's the work that we do, and it's that to get the perspective of different people, different buildings, you know, and then, you know, Joe's been there, I'm, you know, and that we are, we're quite serious, you know, about addressing these things in real time, not having conversations, you know, it's nice to, you know, I, you know, to talk about, you know, but that you're bringing things to us, you know, that are, that are immediate concerns.
To fix things.
That we're quite serious about fixing as soon as possible, you know, so that you can, to Joe's point, you know, be who you need to be in the classroom, so that our students get what they need, our families get what they need, and that, so that's why I joined. I think that's the work that we're doing, and that's the vision that I see going forward.
I just got one question, and I know that, and this is every subcommittee, that some, because people come and people go, and I, and I realize that. My only concern is, I know, like, with COVID, like you said, Joe, there was like, kind of like, a lot of people came, a lot of people went, is my only concern is that we have stakeholders from every school. And I don't know if you do, I'm not, I, I don't, I mean, that's up to U2 to figure it out, but it, it's nine schools in our district, so I think you need to have at least nine people plus U2, plus superintendent, plus whoever else is on it. But I think my one concern is, like you said, because it's important for people to have, obviously, we want to have representatives from every school. So that would be my one concern, is to make sure that we have folks from every single school, including like the preschool and like all the way up through the high school, because no school is any more important or any less important than the other schools. So it's kind of like your kids. So I, I kind of like, that's my, but that's my only concern is that, and I don't know what you guys have for a list of people, but I, I would highly want to have, make sure that we have people from every school and representatives from every school, and an equal amount. Well, I mean, maybe you can have a couple more from the high school, because it's a bigger school, but like, if you decided to have two from every school and two from every school, like, because there is differences between the high school and the elementary level, or even preschool. I mean, so I just, that's my only real big concern, is I don't know after everybody changed, came and went, is that what happened?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the new superintendent has a different presence than the old superintendent. We'll start with the fact that the new superintendent was asked to be on, the old superintendent was on, so it makes it a little bit different feeling, you know what I mean? So I think that with, I have a feeling that, yeah, if we could...
You guys could do like a new campaign to try to get people to come.
Get the word out there and get, I think, I think with what we just saw in the relationship that Sarah's building, I think we may be able to get some people to join.
That's, that's like my concern, is just to make sure that you have people from every school and kind of solicit people to get people to join from every school, so there's all different voices from all different levels. Kathy?
So I was actually going to, I approached this a little bit differently. I, I looked when I was preparing for tonight's meeting. I looked at the committee charge and thought that we need to make a decision whether to extend the committee for another year or dissolve. And when I looked at the committee's charge, two main points, one was to gather and review information and data on culture and climate within the district. And then the other larger picture was make recommendations for positive change to the school committee, superintendent, principals and district administration. I was kind of hoping or expected some type of report with more concrete information about what's actually going on. We get reports every month. I just wondered whether you were planning to report on the data, what kind of data you gathered, rather if it was specific data, what recommendations are coming up? And my gut tells me that I would feel more comfortable if we tabled this for more information that would also include composition of the committee. Since Mike, you brought up composition and I don't mean by name composition, but by or stakeholder. So stakeholder group.
Yeah. So as that data would, you know, suppose we got like a big survey, for instance, like there'd be like the faculty survey that we get from the union. And, and, you know, would we have to go back out and redo another survey to find out the same information? Or would using the survey that we got from the union to come back with recommendations to the school committee? Because the recommendation we're bringing to the school committee is based on data we're gathering through conversations and well, things that are sent to us. And that's why one of the recommendations was, was changing the verbiage of our vision statement to be more supportive of teachers because that's the gist we're hearing. So do you want like me to record statements from them?
Well, no, I'm not.
I guess what, what data do you want? Like a graph of how happy they are?
I just wondered, so the last time we had information that gathered specific data that was shared was when we were talking about the school mascot and that was a major drive at the, at one point in time. I just was asking, I'm not directing you to conduct any surveys. I don't know if surveys are needed. All the school committee members did receive the culture and climate survey results from the BTA, which I don't see any need to repeat that. It's one part of the data. There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, like 12 sub areas of all of the inclusive areas where the committee was going to take a look at some point. You can't look at them all at once, but for making recommendations. So I, I'm just, my feeling is simply that I think to make a better decision, coming up with what the exact composition is, if the composition is fine the way it is, we have broad based representation, that's great. I think when it originally was put together, we did have a list of how the composition would be made. So I, I would just, I would actually like to make a motion to table this for a little bit more specific.
That's fine with me. So yeah, what, what, I don't know if you, I'll go back to the history, just.
No, yeah. So no, I think, can I, can I kind of speak for Kathy? I think, I think what she's looking, I think what we're looking, I think, and I don't disagree with Kathy, kind of like, when we put, first put this together, it was supposed to be like, take issues that are going on. They come, people, people had to, could come to you guys and they could say to you, listen, this is a problem in our school, like, and you guys would kind of chew on it, figure out the solution. And then if it had to come to the school committee, come to the school committee, if it had to go to the superintendent, go to like, kind of like figure out where it had to go.
That's not how, it started with, when we were talking about the vision statement, adjusting it and your recommendation was to, we got a subcommittee and we started a subcommittee. That was like where it started.
No, it actually started when we got the student, the teacher satisfaction survey and I actually put a workshop together. And through that, what came out of that workshop, through the teacher satisfaction survey with the district was a workshop. And then from that workshop, we then talked about doing a subcommittee to look at some of the problems that came up during the survey during the workshop. So that's where it kind of came from.
Right.
That was the history of it. So I guess my question would be, over the last three years, what recommendations have come out of that subcommittee? And that's, I think, kind of a report on.
Well, the recommend, yeah.
Just all the different recommendations that's come out through the subcommittee.
Yeah. So like, for instance, we, we, well, we'll put it on the agenda next time. The recommendation is some language change in the vision statement.
Right. Right. So that's one of them.
So that's a recommendation.
So that's one of them. That's one of them. But what other recommendations have come up through that for the last three years?
So that's, that's what I'm saying. We have a new, we have new, new, new people in the room. So that's, do you want us to redefine the subcommittee? We want new?
Maybe, maybe we should, maybe we should look at.
Just re, redefining them, readjusting our mission? Or does it have to be completely readjusted? Or can we kind of finish with, come up with our initial recommendation?
That's for your subcommittee to.
That's what the subcommittee has to determine. I would not tell you what I think your subcommittee should do. I, we, we did put together the purpose of the subcommittee when we, it's not a subcommittee, it's a advisory.
Advisory committee.
We put that together when it was formed, but it's the committee needs to work within its confines, which you are. But I just expected to have some type of a more comprehensive report so that a well-informed decision could be made to extend or whether or not we needed to dissolve for something else. I don't have a feeling one way or the other.
And the other thing, Joe is.
So, okay. So like.
Well, the other thing is, is if you think about, if you think about other sub, other subcommittees or advisory committees we've had, like they tweak, they kind of tweak their, their, their mission statement or, or their function. If you remember, right, we did that with Barbara's, we changed it because they all of a sudden took on the mascot, remember? So that we had to tweak their, what their purpose was. So do we need to tweak the purpose? Do we need to tweak anything? Do we keep it the way it is? What is, like I said, my question would be like a report kind of of what recommendations have come. And not only to us, and you don't have to get into specifics as far as like, we've, we've recommended 10 things to the superintendent. We've recommended three things to the school committee and these are what they are. You know what I mean?
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Because that's kind of what we originally got this for and vision statement was one of them.
Yes.
That was one of them, but that was only part of it. So that's kind of what, and that's what I would like to kind of see. So I think maybe table this until next month and just kind of give you guys some time to kind of talk to the subcommittee or the advisory committee and see if you want to tweak what you guys are working on or how, how you want it to move forward.
So the way that you approved this last year, this subcommittee ends on February 2nd, 2023, which is tomorrow.
So why don't we just extend it for one month?
Sounds good.
We'll extend it for one month because then that'll give you this month to decide and then we'll change the date till March after our next school committee meeting. So when's our next?
I would move to extend the advisory committee on school culture and climate through March 31st.
Can I get a second?
How second that?
Having a motion to second it to extend the, for two months in order to give them time to kind of come back to us.
Discussion?
Discussion.
All right. So initially this, when I joined it, I joined it and my goal was, one of my personal goal was when we brought it up and had discussions in the committee, number of times was talking about adjusting the vision statement. And that's kind of in my mind how it formed. And when we had, when the committee, the language sometimes is too much language and things, and the language was one of the things was to gather data. So from suggested by the previous superintendent, we should create a survey to gather the data. And I don't know if you've ever tried to create a survey with 26 people and write things. It just, it just takes forever. So they were like, so we just ended up pushing this thing on and it just kind of was like, that's what kind of slowed the whole thing down. Well, we have data. We have data from, from the teachers, sir. We get that survey every year. So we don't need that specific data, right? So we already have it. So I was just, I was kind of like, all right, when the new superintendent gets in, hopefully we can kind of get this. Cause even though superintendent wasn't the chair of it, her presence alone was somewhat, you know, the conversation wasn't as, sometimes people aren't as open or uncertain.
So I, I would just have a point.
So I think we'll be able to get things done. That's all. More done, more finished.
I was going to make a point of order to make sure that we're just sticking to the decision to whether extend or dissolve. And there's a motion to extend through March 31st.
A second.
Yeah, we have a second. So any other discussion? No? So it'll be a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Ayes have it unanimously. Okay. Moving on to 6.1, initial presentation of the FY24 budget. Sarah, Gareth and, I'm sorry, I forget, Christopher. Do you go by Chris or Christopher? Chris? Okay. Welcome.
It's a different vantage point.
Now you know why people get nervous?
It was a little more intimidating.
Welcome Gareth.
Chris has joined me and Gareth in preparing this initial presentation with him starting January 17th. We thought we would, we would present.
You weren't like me. You weren't going to have him come on down. You wanted, you're being much nicer than I am.
So good evening, Gareth Markle, Deputy Finance Director for Municipal Operations, but I'll give you one more night tonight.
Wow. You're too good for us now Gareth? Is that what it is?
I, I did want to start off by just welcoming Chris to the finance team officially. We've had a chance to work together for the last few weeks and I think I'll be leaving you with some great stuff there.
I'm going to see you at the grocery store and you're just going to keep on walking. Like, hey Gareth, you're going to be like, I don't know you.
Well, I was reflecting back today and this would be my 13th budget presentation to the school committees.
Are you going to come back next year just because you're going to be sad or?
I will be here available if you need me.
Well, thank you. Let me, first of all, before you start, thank you Gareth. I've worked with you now for seven years. This will be my, what, seventh, seventh budget. So thank you. You're always like, you make it, you can explain it to me. So you know what? If you can explain it to me, you do a really good job at it because you can bring it down to my level and let me ask my questions. And like, you've always done a phenomenal job. You take the time to explain things and so honestly, you will be missed. Chris does have big shoes to fit into because you've always, like, I don't feel like any question that I ask is too stupid because you may make fun of me, but then you'll give me the answer and kind of like, be like, this is why, Mike. So honestly, thank you for, for helping us in, in all the work you've done for the school. And I know you're still going to stay in the, in the finance department, but thank you, honestly.
Can I just speak? I, I, I do want to stay for Gareth's last stand. I wanted to see this really, really bad, but I have a prior engagement that I'm going to be late for. However, I want to say it's been an absolute pleasure. Your patience, the amount of time you took to explain all the items and just sitting here and having to listen to us for all of those nights. I mean, it's just, it's amazing. I'm going to miss having you there. Friendly face and it's just always been great working with you. So best of luck in your new position and you know, we were lucky to have you while we did. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So now you can start.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So just to start with our annual budget, and this is as taken from school committee policy. The annual budget is a financial expression of the educational program of the Barnstable school system in order to meet the needs of all students. It's more than just a financial instrument. It requires commitment from all stakeholders in our community to ensure that we meet our educational goals and objectives. Just a reminder that public school budgeting is heavily regulated and controlled by the legislature, both state and local school committee and town charter requirements. It's, it's funny, as we've developed this budget, I've often looked back at Franklin Public Schools where just so we can see what the superintendent has been used to and you can kind of see the themes of budget development being similar throughout the Commonwealth and everything we do. And lastly, the superintendent is assigned the responsibility to prepare, present and administer the budget. And she may delegate some of those responsibilities as needed, hence why you see deputy directors of finance up here at any given meeting. So with that, we'll move on.
As Gareth noted, the budget development process is pretty similar or very similar to what I had experienced in a previous district. Again, I think reflecting some commonalities across communities. There are some differences though, unique to Barnstable as it relates to our governance structure. By charter, on October 20th, the town council and the school committee met, as you know, to review the financial condition of the town and financial policies in a joint meeting. By the end of October, by charter, the town manager and school superintendent develop an annual policy agreement, which has been a 60-40 split historically related to general fund revenue growth. We had sites and departments submit budget updates and requests to us by winter break. And Gareth and I, along with other members of the central office team, met with principals and directors of various sites to talk about budget development and to review their requests. And tonight is the first initial presentation, although the budget's an iterative process and there will be subsequent steps in the coming workshops and meetings. We'll talk about those at the end. In terms of the way I'm looking at the budget and certain priorities that I would be recommending to you, some of which stem off of the entry report that I presented earlier this evening. They would fall into some of these high priority areas. The first is an equitable allocation of resources and making sure that we're looking across the district at equity, you know, particularly thinking about our five elementary schools. Equity, equity does not mean equal. It means that each school has what they need to serve the students and families of that specific school. However, even within that, I think we want to make sure that we're equitable in allocating resources to the best of our ability. And so there's, I'm jumping a little to the end, but some themes around how we might be supporting elementary with support staff. And then district wide, making sure that we're, we're supporting district wide programs like English language development and special education and related services equitable across all of our schools. Making sure that in an era, in an era where we have limited resources and some staffing challenges that we're applying our staffing most effectively. Again, thinking both for the next year as well as future years, thinking about how we can leverage resources for talent development with recruitment and retention strategies, professional development and succession planning. We have some requests and a need to focus on instruction. Again, one of the opportunities I pointed out this evening through curriculum supports. Making sure that we're continuing to attend to our facilities, particularly around planning and space needs. However, we are thinking about this budget a bit conservatively, you know, particularly as we think about some of the one-time funds that were awarded to districts, including ESER funding. Next year is the last year of ESER funding. And so we need to be planning, I think, conservatively this year, you know, particularly as we think about positions because there are long-term considerations, but we do need to meet students' needs. So it's a bit of a dilemma.
Budget assumptions for FY24. We're still very at the, at the beginning stage of budget development. But we went through our joint meeting with the town council and as the superintendent, we did come up with the 60-40 revenue sharing agreement again. Our preliminary revenue share allocation is 80 million, $5,459 and that's a 4.2% increase over our existing allocation. Our salary and wages have been negotiated with all of our collective bargaining groups. On average, it's about a 3% increase. So you'll see cost of living adjustments of 3%. And we will carry that same percentage increase for non-affiliated and other costs like. And we will carry that same percentage increase for non-affiliated and other costs like stipends, coaches and things like that that might not be within a collective bargaining agreement. Our anticipated revolving fund offsets will look to decrease by just over 225,000 from our current FY23 levels or 7.73% decrease. That has contributed to some of the one-time costs that we chose from our school choice account. As an example, the $105,000 you approved at our last meeting for a dump truck. But it's also reflective of less use of our school choice account to a more sustainable level in FY24. We plan to continue our enhancing of the substitute budget lines in the district. As I've said in previous years, we've underfunded those lines. We want to make sure that we're bringing those lines up in accordance with any increases that we've put in place in recent years, but also reflective of the need for substitutes. So we'll be looking to increase substitute budget lines in FY24. As no surprise, our budget is being pressed due to inflationary adjustments, most notably in the area of software. We do, we are expecting increases in tuitions. So to a certain extent, that is going to be mitigated by actual decrease in students. So it's a little bit of a break even in that area, but it, we certainly won't be realizing any savings. We'll be looking at the need to increase for inflation our facilities budgets, for consumables that the facilities director utilizes in any one year. We've level funded a lot of those accounts in recent years. And with the, the change in the economy and the environment, we cannot hold those lines where they are any longer. So we'll see some adjustments there. And lastly, we're looking at savings account support. At this time, the 4.2% allocation with the reductions in our revolving fund offsets really brings us into a level service position. So if we are looking to make enhancements or make any targeted improvements or superintendent investments, our proposal would be looking to offset that with savings account use. It's worth noting that we are still very early in the budget development cycle as far as gathering information from the state level. And so we see potential changes to our allocation or projections based on information that we'll see coming out in the next month, month and a half.
You remember, I was just gonna ask when does that, I always forget when that usually comes out, so it comes out like another month?
It's late, it's late this year, usually it comes out, the governor's budget comes out the end of January, but with the new governor, it's, it's coming out late. But there is some advocacy at the state, you know, with the state or towards the state to, to add to chapter 70.
Okay.
Based on inflation in particular. Some background information for you and the community. These are slides that you've seen before related to district enrollment. So our district enrollment is up slightly over the past couple of years after taking a dip in the pandemic year. And our October 1st number was 4,838, which we've maintained pretty steadily this year. We are seeing a little bit of enrollment activity at this time of year, which we typically do. And so it's, if you look over the six-year trend, it's pretty, pretty stable. In terms of trends of the subgroups, again, this is information that we shared back probably around October 1 timeframe in terms of seeing various subgroups trending upwards over time. We currently have 33.4% of our students who register in the district as having their first language not being English, which is up from eight point, a low of 8.2 in 2016. We have 21.2% of our students as English language learners, which is a big jump over the years since 2014 from 6.5%. Students with disabilities is tracking more stably with 17.2% in the current year as of October 1. The biggest jump that you might note here would be related to low income or economically disadvantaged. But the state changed the formula around which people, families were identified, so it is a little bit of a false comparison. But 54.3% this year are, are noted as economically disadvantaged in our student management system. So the high needs category, which is an unduplicated count of all of these subgroups sits at 66.7%. And I think I would just sort of add a little bit of detail there around some questions that are often raised around your enrollment's going down, why does the cost of education continue to go up? And it's not just me saying this, but the state has come forward and said that it costs more to educate students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, English language learners, students with disabilities. And that was the whole basis of the Student Opportunity Act, resetting the formula and providing a more adequate education. And we'll talk a little bit more about what those numbers look like for Barnstable. But that is the answer to why it costs more to educate a perhaps smaller population of students.
And just refresh my memory, high needs is all of those other categories put together?
They're all combined, but an unduplicated count, so you could have a student that falls in English learner
Multiple, right.
and student with disabilities, but they would be counted once in the high needs category.
High needs is put them all together, but only, you only get one?
Yeah.
If you're in three of them, you're still only one person?
You're counted as one person, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So now we'll just have a look at the general fund support for FY24. So as previously presented at the October 20th meeting, joint meeting with the town council, unchanged is, unchanged is our projection for general fund allocation. But as a reminder, how we come about that number, we look at anticipated revenues and we make revenue estimates for FY24. Property taxes, other taxes, one of the more variable ones, state taxes, state, state aid, charges for services, fees, fines and penalties, licenses, other revenue permits, assessments, and any transfers into the general fund. So we put all that revenue together. We're estimating a increase or new revenue of just over $8.1 million in FY24 or 4.4%. From that 8 million change, we have to look at any changes to our fixed cost categories at the municipal level that would include things like school assessments. So as an example would be our Commonwealth charter tuition or our school choice outgoing fees. Regional tech assessments would fall under those categories, that category. Employee benefits, we budget within our municipal fixed cost category, so we need to allow for any changes or anticipated changes to health insurance plans, other fixed charges, and any state and county assessments. And so we have a total change in fixed costs of two points, just over $2.7 million. So we subtract out the net change in assessments and charges from the available new revenue and that gives us the total new revenue for FY24 of $5,373,081 or 4.4%. Applying our 60-40 revenue sharing agreement, 60% is allocated, 60% increase is allocated to the school department, which equals $3,223, sorry, $3,223,848, 4.2% and just over $2.1 million for the municipal budget.
I just want to make it, so you were saying that that 4.2 or 3.2 million, that is just to do a level? Like that is gonna equate to, as it stands right now, a level funded budget? So that's just keeping what we have, not adding anything?
Minor adjustments, but.
But for the most part.
For the most part, it's a level service.
It's kind of like a typical budget year where everybody's like, oh, you have a 70-whatever-million-dollar budget and we have like a thousand dollars, we have $100,000 that we can decide what we do with, but everything else is already spoken for.
Exactly, yes.
So it's gonna be another typical year like that-ish, looking that way? Yeah, okay.
As I had mentioned, one of the more variable budget lines when calculating our revenue and hence the 60-40 share is state aid. And the variable part of that is the chapter 78 for education. As an example, our FY22 chapter 78 in FY22 was $13,165,466. In FY23, we saw a 42% increase in chapter 78, $5,540,730. That's an unprecedented increase, nothing that we have seen like that in previous years. You're looking at around 2.5%, 3% increase where we typically get the minimum aid distribution, which in any given fiscal year is somewhere around $25 to $30 per student increase over the previous year. Chapter 78 changed significantly due to changes in our foundation budget as a result of the, what's the?
Student Opportunity Act.
Student Opportunity Act. So we saw an increase in our foundation budget of over $10.3 million. So an FY23 foundation budget of $75,594,780. And as a reminder, the foundation budget is what the state deems as kind of the bare-bones minimum amount required to open up a school district and provide a fair and equal education. In actual fact, it probably costs you another $20 million to make it a, an education that's worth it, to be honest with you. So hence why you always see our net school spending above that targeted foundation budget. But needless to say, as our foundation budget goes up, the required net school spending requirement will go up also. We're interested to see what the FY24 numbers will actually be. But at this time, with no available state information, we have made an extremely conservative estimate of a 2.5% increase in our chapter 78, approximately $467,000 more than our current level. We completely expect that to change and go up. We've done some internal calculations, but I think it's too early to revise our estimates. So this will be one of those fluid things that might change as we go through the budget cycle. So our general fund allocation back in FY18, 60, just under 65 million. Up to our FY23 allocation of $76,781, $781,611. Our FY24, as previously mentioned, is just over $80 million. If you look in the far right column, savings are used. So the savings use is the district's share of free cash or as we turn the school savings account. The school savings account, we've typically used one to support our operating budget in years in which we, we want to make enhancements or supplement the, the budget for targeted purposes or one-time purchases. 2018, we utilized $230,000 to support our operating budget for one-time purchases. And then later on in 2021 and 22, we had budgeted $950,531 each year in order to provide, provide a operating support. In FY23, with the bumps in chapter 70, we dialed that back and we were able to absorb those costs. But it is worth noting that in each of those five years where we were utilizing the savings account for both one-time and reoccurring costs, we were able to replace those funds each year with returned appropriations or excess revenue. So it was and is a sustainable model as proven. If we look at the growth of our general fund allocation adjusted for the savings account use, so taken, we've taken that out, on average, we are right around 3.1% year-over-year in allocations. Obviously, we had a few dips there. 2021 went down to 1.81% increase year-over-year. But then you see the 5.8% in FY23 and our current estimate of 4.2% in FY24. In addition to our general fund allocation, we use offset accounts housed in our revolving funds to support our general operations. The two largest accounts that will, we utilize and we'll talk about tonight is our school choice and circuit breaker funds. Our school choice is obviously funds received for education, educating students that reside outside of Barnstable. We receive approximately $5,000 each, for each student charged to their sending district. And that rate can also include a special ed increment if there are additional cost or services identified on an individual education plan. About probably six years ago now, the state included within the school choice calculations an assessment for students attending Commonwealth virtual schools. In their wisdom, they have increased the assessment each year for each student attending a Commonwealth virtual school. And the current level is $9,259. I don't understand why the $5,000 hasn't gone up by an equal amount, but, because it's certainly not getting any cheaper to educate a student. But you'll see that virtual schools are also included in the assessments for school choice. The district can elect not to enroll students in the choice program and we have exercised that option in a number of years based on the limitations of space throughout the district. For FY24, our current recommended expense level will be a supplement of approximately $600,000 to support the operating budget and that will have us based on current estimates to close FY24 with a balance of just over $1.6 million. Obviously, the school choice funds are within the control of the school committee and you can elect to accelerate or lower that amount as you see appropriate. Hint, but this is the, the current recommended spending level that we see as sustainable, while also providing some flexibility throughout the year if you need to approve emergency or additional spending.
And those funds can be used for anything?
General purpose, yeah.
Okay. Was that used for when Hyannis West had their roof issue, is that, no?
No, in that case, we had a supplemental appropriation.
Okay, but, but this can be used for anything?
Yes. As an example of the school choice revolving fund, this is school choice receiving tuition. Just gives you an idea of the last three years. We're projecting in FY23 about 86 students choice into Barnstable and you can see the, the changes year-over-year from the varying school districts. So circuit breaker, the other offset account that we use for our operating budget. As a reminder, the circuit breaker is a state reimbursement program for extraordinary special ed costs. The threshold in FY22 is $46,705, which is four times the state average foundation budget under the chapter 70 program. budget under the Chapter 70 program. And so what happens here is the state looks at the costs that are submitted from the town or from Barnstable that exceed that $46,000 threshold, and they apply a reimbursement at 75% of those excess costs to the town or to the district the next year. So as an example, students claimed and costs incurred in FY '22 will be the funds that we receive in FY '23 as our reimbursement. The reimbursement that we receive in FY '23 is the number that we will budget for the offset in FY '24, so that we have banked those funds ahead of time, and we're not kind of chasing revenues throughout the fiscal year. So circuit breaker reimbursements are for the district's prior year, prior year's expense. The rate is established annually by the state, and it is subject to appropriation at the state level. Some years, they have not been able to fund at that 75% amount, although based on the current condition of the state, I don't foresee them not meeting that 75% threshold this year, so a relatively stable line at this point. So in FY '22, we claimed 69 students that exceeded that foundation budget four times threshold, total eligible expenses totaling just over $6.1 million. The foundation amount was just over $3.3 million, so we had a net cost of $2.5 million, and then a transportation portion. So a net claim was $2,782,860. At the 75% level, we received just shy of $1.9 million, or we planned to receive just shy of $1.9 million, plus 75% of the transportation cost, so that's how we come about that $2,87,152 reimbursement, again, received in FY '23. We get it distributed to us monthly, 12 equal installments, and then we will budget that for FY '24. And again, we have to use this fund, we're not allowed to carry over more than one year's worth of revenue at any time, so that's why we kind of use it.
Could you elaborate on the restrictions around how that circuit breaker can be used?
It's considered a special ed education reimbursement, so we apply that to our outer district tuition offset. So as an example, our outer district tuition for, budget line for outer district tuitions is just over $3.8, $3.7 million. We'll offset that each year by the balance that we receive for a circuit breaker.
And were the 69 students upon which the circuit breaker revenue was generated, are they all in outer district placement, or are they a combination of in and out of district?
That's a great question. In a typical school district, you'll generally see 95% of the circuit breaker reimbursement being generated for outer district tuitions. In Barnstable, that is slightly tilted in that we offer some very in-depth, internal specialized programs that can reach that threshold. But to simply answer your question, yes, most of it is from outer district tuition, with a few exceptions. So our total budget as planned at this point in time for FY '24 is the school choice allocation of $600,000, the circuit breaker revenue of the $2,87,152, and a general fund contribution of $80,5,459, for a total budget of $82,692,611, pretty much consistent with prior year spending patterns.
And just to kind of summarize where we are in the process and share with you a little bit of those kind of superintendent investment areas that we are currently in the process of reviewing and considering, we had 96 submissions from the 18 cost centers with a total cost of these requests summing to $4.1 million. And so there's some considerations to be made to review them. We did meet with all of the department heads and principals, and we're still figuring out what selections might want to put forward to recommend to you, evaluating multiple scenarios and aligning those with the entry plan and priorities that have been identified. So the next steps would be to preview that with you at the workshop on February 15th. The positions that have been requested, total 47.32 FTEs, and there have been some major submission themes, although a little hard to pick out of 96 submissions, but there had been a pretty strong, pretty strong theme around supporting our English, our multi-language learners, our English learner support, including more family liaisons to engage with families and conduct some much-needed translation and family engagement, focus on instruction, including instructional leadership, teacher leadership, succession planning, curriculum materials, and then some paraprofessional support for kindergarten and grade one in our elementary schools are among the themes that were submitted, but each school did have some unique requests as well. So next steps, as I previewed, we have a workshop budget roundtable in two weeks on the 15th. We will come back to you on March 1st with a more detailed budget at your regular meeting. The public hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, March 15th, for budget adoption in, at the first meeting in April on April 5th, after which the budget would be submitted to the town manager as your proposed budget.
Excellent, thank you very much. You have any questions? Andrea, Peter? I know you're all set. Peter, you good? Yeah? Kathy?
So, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for posting the fiscal year '20 to '23 actuals. I skimmed the 77 pages, it was posted Monday.
I'm kind of disappointed, Kathy, I would have thought it was more than a skim.
I didn't have time to...
Gareth, you could say it, Gareth, you're pretty disappointed in that, too.
I know. I haven't had time to really go through everything, but the one thing that I did notice is that, you know, I was hoping that with the actual figures, so with the budget for fiscal year, current year '23, we've got all the breakdown, I was hoping that we could see, with a push of a different button, the line item breakdown. So we all know that we've got pressing priorities, we know that next year may not be too troublesome fiscal year '24, but the following subsequent years are going to be tough, leave us with very tough decisions. So in light of that, looking forward more than just fiscal year '23, to see what these actual figures are and to really project our fiscal year '24 budget for the line items where we see actual amounts very close to what we really think the actual spending line items will be, that will help to make future decisions better. So, you know, you brought up the substitutes, we know substitutes are, we're always over budget, so to see what the actual spending is, put the money in there. We still pay our subs, we don't say, okay, we don't, we're not going to bring a sub in, we still pay them, it comes from somewhere. If we can just try to predict and make sure the line items are as close to what we really think they're going to be with our best judgment, I think it will help us see where potential shifts could be to make up some of those requests even for next year. So hopefully, we can get that, and don't worry, this is my weekend reading. I'm really looking forward to it, unlike most people, I think.
Excellent, any other questions? I think Kathy probably asked a lot of questions, that's what we were all thinking. I know, Peter, you were going that way, but you decided to let Kathy take the thunder on that one. Excellent, thank you very much for the presentation. I know this is just the beginning, and any questions that you may have, just at any point, show them out to either Gareth, Chris, or Sarah. Okay, so that'll do that. Moving on to 6.2, approved use of reserves for capital improvement projects. Sarah and Gareth? Or just Gareth? I don't want to say anything, Chris, but I keep having your name next to all of these, and I noticed you're sitting in that back row still.
So no surprise, we have gone through the list of CIPs for FY '24. I know that you have previously approved the projects. They've gone through their vetting process at both the town and school department head level, in addition to a review by the town manager. A recommended list of projects has been put forth to this town departments, along with their funding source. At this time, we're looking at a total of $1.9 million for school projects to be borrowed or bond issued for in FY '24. We will be looking to pay $1,918,846 from general fund reserves, all of the district's share of free cash or school savings, and $681,154 of the proposed projects will be paid for from closed projects in the school department that we're able to reuse.
So savings from other projects that are already done?
That's correct. The existing appropriation orders will be amended and the funds transferred to the new projects.
Okay.
So we're looking tonight for your support of the $1,918,846 from the school savings account to fund the school CIP. Yep, go ahead, Kathy.
So I think this looks pretty, pretty good, that they're, these were all approved for funding, correct, for fiscal year '24?
So the listed projects are approved. The two projects that were put forth that were not included in this list were the rooftop unit ventilators at Barnstable High School and BIS. We currently have two years' worth of projects to catch up on, so we thought we would take a year off on that, you'll see that on the CIP for FY '25, at everything being equal. And the second project was the renovations or expansion of the maintenance building and transportation office. We felt that project needed to be further looked at at a kind of town-wide global level to look at storage amongst all departments in the town, so we're putting a pin in that one, so to speak.
I thought that, that looked pretty good, though. All right, I would move to approve the use of reserves for capital improvement projects as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion, a second. Is this a roll call vote, because, or would this be a voice vote? Just a voice vote, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Okay, moving on to 6.3, thank you, Gareth, oh, you're still here. 6.3, approve FY '23 grants, gifts, and donations.
Gifts, grants, and donations for acceptance tonight, as included in your packets, include five Cape Cod Five mini-grants through various sites throughout the district. Total grants total $3,389.
Move to approve fiscal year '23 grants, gifts, and donations as outlined in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion, a second, a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 6.4, budget transfer authorization. Can I get either Peter or Andre to do the?
6.4, move to approve budget transfer authorizations as outlined in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion, a second, this is a roll call vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it three to one. Can I get 6.5, approved accounts payable warrant, FY '23 warrant number 31?
I'll move to approve accounts payable warrant, FY '23 warrant number 31, and the amount of $590,898.46.
Having a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion, a second, this is a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Okay, now I'm going to make a motion to go into, move to go into executive session, not to reconvene in public session to discuss school committee executive session minutes for January 11th, 2023, and to discuss strategies with respect to litigation. Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion, a second, this is a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair is a yes, passes unanimously. That will conclude our public part of our school committee meeting, have a good night.